Salve, Sua Cristo Cristo! Gloria en Jesucristo Cristo! Bienvenidos a nuestra tercera sesión de nuestro estudio bíblico. El tema de hoy es el caer y la promesa. Así que estaremos estudiando Genesis, capítulo tres. Comencemos con la oración. En el nombre del Padre, y del Hijo, y del Espíritu Santo, Amén. En el nombre del Padre, y del Hijo, y del Espíritu Santo, Amén. En el nombre del Padre, y del Hijo, y del Espíritu Santo, Amén. Oh Dios Jesucristo Cristo, abra los ojos de mi corazón para que pueda escuchar tu palabra, y entender, y hacer tu voluntad; porque soy un pecador sobre la tierra. No oculte tus mandamientos de mí, sino que abra mis ojos para que pueda ver los milagros de tu ley. Me revele las cosas ocultas y secretas de tu sabiduría. En ti establezco mi esperanza, oh Dios mío, que tú me ilumines mi mente y mi comprensión con la luz de tu conocimiento; no solo para amar aquellas cosas que están escritas, sino para hacerlas; que al leer las vidas y las palabras de los santos, no puedo pecar, sino que puede servir para mi restauración, iluminación y sanctificación, para la salvación de mi alma y la herencia de la vida eterna. Porque tú eres la iluminación de aquellos que están en la oscuridad, y de ti viene cada buena acción y cada buen regalo, Amén. Gloria sea al Padre, y al Hijo, y al Espíritu Santo, ahora y para siempre y para siempre, Amén. Comencemos con una rápida revisión. Primero, la revisión de la primera historia de la creación, capítulo uno de Genesis. Tenemos un texto teológico tan preocupado por el por qué Dios creó principalmente y no cómo Dios creó. Es un informe objetivo. El texto nos dice que solo hay un Dios que creó los mundos visibles y invisibles en el mundo en ese momento, que era politéstico. El informe nos dice que Dios es bueno y toda la creación es buena. Hay orden, belleza y armonía para todo lo que Dios creó. Los días no son épocas, pero no se presentan cronológicamente. Así que Dios no crea en 24, seis días 24 horas, sino en épocas o períodos de tiempo. Y hay un plan para todo. La creación no está terminada, está en proceso, avanzando hacia la cumplimiento, que es el día siete. Y, por supuesto, Dios guía el proceso. Se escribió por Moisés con una perspectiva del mundo antigua en mente. Así que una idea de cómo el mundo se vería como si fuera una perspectiva del mundo antigua. Pero es un texto inspirado, y al final vemos que revela el orden científico de la creación. Ahora, una rápida revisión del segundo informe de la creación, que es más antiguo. El segundo cuento de la creación es más antiguo que el primer cuento. Y esta es una verdadera historia, no es un mito. Adam y Eva realmente existieron. Es una historia subjetiva que nos relaciona con la mayor experiencia humana y momento de conciencia humana. Es una historia sobre relaciones. Relación con Dios, otros, la tierra, animales. Y explorando esas relaciones, el hombre descubre quién es como persona. La historia es altamente simbólica. La interpretación de la historia es tanto literal como espiritual al mismo tiempo. La historia nos enseña que el primer hombre fue creado por Dios. Y así Dios creó la alma del espíritu inmediatamente de nada, y luego crió en un cuerpo que había formado. Y el primer hombre se convirtió en un ser vivo con una alma inmortal. Dios también formó el cuerpo de la tierra, así que las Escrituras no nos dicen exactamente cómo lo hizo. Es posible que Dios usó un cuerpo que él formó inmediatamente de materia inorgánica, así de la polvo de la tierra. Sin embargo, también es posible que él usó el material orgánico vivo, es decir, un cuerpo animal que él formó de la polvo del suelo a través del tiempo a través de un proceso que él mismo dirigió. Así que Dios podría haber formado un cuerpo, un cuerpo animal que sentía que podía usar. Y luego, en un punto en que el tiempo creó de nada la alma del espíritu y infusó eso en el cuerpo, y el cuerpo se convirtió en un cuerpo humano, se transformó en un cuerpo humano. Así que eso también es posible. Así que una teoría materialista de la evolución es inaceptable y debe ser rechazada. ¿Y qué es una teoría material de la evolución? Es la idea de que el cuerpo y la alma del hombre desarrollaron progresivamente del reino animal y que es solo una transición suave, simplemente sucedió por casualidad o casualidad aleatoria. Así que eso es rechazado por la iglesia. Pero una teoría divina de la evolución es posible. Así que en esa teoría, Dios forma un cuerpo de cualquier manera que quisiera hacerlo. Podría haber sido a través de este proceso de evolución. Y luego, en el punto en que el tiempo, de nada, crea la alma del espíritu humano, infunde eso en esa materia orgánica para crear el primer ser humano. El siguiente punto es que el hombre consiste en dos elementos: un cuerpo material y una alma espiritual. ¿Y qué es el espíritu? El espíritu es simplemente el corazón de la alma, y es inseparable de la alma. Y, por supuesto, la alma humana es inmortal. La primera mujer fue creada de los hombres. Así que Dios puso al primer hombre en un sueño profundo, una pérdida temporal de conciencia o conciencia de ser. Y la primera mujer fue creada desde el núcleo, la misma esencia del primer hombre. Siguiente, Dios es el autor del matrimonio. Así que Dios trajo a la mujer al hombre e instituyó el matrimonio según su plan para ser un vínculo indisoluble de amor. Así que el hombre y la mujer se convirtieron en una carne como describe en Generis 2:25 en una relación de covenia. Ellos en el matrimonio son un regalo total de uno al otro y de Dios. Y así vemos que el matrimonio mismo se convierte en imagen y similitud de Dios. Inocencia original. El primer hombre y la mujer fueron puestos en el paradiso donde vivieron en perfecta paz, amor y armonía entre ellos, con Dios y con la naturaleza. Ambos estaban desnudos y no se avergonzaban, lo que significa que estaban en el estado de inocencia pura. Punto siete, el hombre es llamado a amar. Así que Dios, quien creó al hombre de amor, también lo llama a amar, que es la vocación fundamental y innata de cada ser humano. Creado en la imagen y la similitud de Dios, el hombre es creado para ser un ser social, un regalo a Dios y un regalo a otros. Y así vemos que como persona solitaria, el hombre es incompleto. Ocho, el hombre es llamado a la dirección. Él debe decirle a la tierra y mantenerla, Genesis, capítulo dos, versículo 15. También es responsable de mirar a las criaturas vivientes sobre la tierra. Y así nombrarlos es un signo de que tiene dominio sobre ellos y que debe cuidarlos. Y finalmente, punto nueve, toda la raza humana proviene de un solo par. Así que la primera mujer, Eva, es, según las Escrituras, Genesis, capítulo dos, treinta, la madre de todos los vivos. Y la enciclónica Humani Generis de Pius XII, publicada en 1950, rechaza el poligenismo debido a su incompatibilidad con la doctrina del pecado original. Así que una cosa más que tenemos que ver antes de continuar con el texto real de la historia. Hay tres reinos aquí que han sido descritos. Así que el primer reino es lo que llamamos el tercer cielo. Ese es el mundo invisible que Dios había creado. Es el reino de los seres angélicos. Y en ese reino simplemente hay conocimiento de bien. Y luego tienes a Dios creando el jardín de Edén para el primer par humano. Está en el mundo visible porque es material. Y es el paradiso original. Y dentro de ese jardín de Edén, solo hay conocimiento de bien. Es un lugar de inocencia, de bien, y es el hogar de nuestros primeros padres. Y luego tienes este tercer reino, que es la tierra y el universo que Dios está creando en el proceso de creación. Y es el mundo visible, ¿dónde está? Está fuera del jardín de Edén. Y es hermoso, puedes llamarlo un segundo paradiso. El mundo en el que vivimos es hermoso, pero es incompleto, todavía en proceso. Dios todavía está trabajando, creando, y se mueve a su cumplimiento y su completa final antes del séptimo día. Así que de alguna manera todavía carece de esa perfección. Es un lugar de imperfección. Y así en él verás, en este mundo visible, tenemos el ciclo de vida y muerte. Las plantas viven, crecen y mueren, tienes temporadas. Tienes animales que viven y mueren. Son comida para otros animales. Y también se convierte en el reino de los espíritus caídos. Así que este mundo llega bajo el dominio de Satan y sus espíritus malvados cuando caen del cielo. Así que es un lugar donde hay conocimiento de bien y mal. Así que una vez más, en el tercer cielo, el mundo invisible, solo hay conocimiento de bien. En el jardín de Edén, el paradiso, solo hay conocimiento de bien. Y en este mundo visible, fuera del jardín de Edén, hay el conocimiento de bien y mal. Una cosa más antes de ir al texto. Y, por supuesto, no se le da en la historia, pero sabemos la historia del libro de la revelación y también del Nuevo Testamento. Que los ángeles fueron probados antes de que el primer par humano fuese probado. Y hay la historia del caer de Satan. Así que uno de los seres angélicos rebeló contra Dios y llevó a un montón de otros seres angélicos con él. Y así caían contra Dios. Así que voy a leer el texto del libro de la revelación, capítulo doce, versículos siete a nueve. Y se desató la guerra en el cielo. El arquangelo Michael y sus ángeles pelearon contra el dragón. Así que el dragón aquí es Satan. Satan significa engañador. Y el dragón es originalmente Lucifer, el ángel de la luz, que cae en desgracia. Así que el dragón y sus ángeles pelearon, pero fueron derrotados. Y no había más lugar para ellos en el cielo. El gran dragón fue tirado hacia abajo. Ese serpiente antiguo. Así que mantén eso en mente porque va a aparecer a Adam y Eva en la forma de un serpiente. Ese serpiente antiguo que es llamado el diablo y Satan, el engañador de todo el mundo, fue tirado hacia la tierra. Y sus ángeles fueron tirados con él. Y así una vez más confirmando que este mundo visible viene bajo su dominio como siendo tirado hacia la tierra. Así que ahora vamos a pasar al capítulo tres de Genesis. Podemos permitir leerlo en este momento porque es lo suficientemente corto. Pero mientras continuamos, la próxima semana no leeremos el texto. Necesitarás leer el texto antes del tiempo en preparación para el estudio bíblico. Así que por favor, ve a tus bibles, Genesis, capítulo tres. Mi traducción puede diferir de la tuya, pero simplemente sigue lo mejor que puedas. Ahora, el serpiente era más sutil que cualquier otra criatura salvaje que Dios había hecho. Él dijo a la mujer: ¿Dijo Dios que no comerás de ningún árbol del jardín? Y la mujer dijo al serpiente: podemos comer de la fruta de los árboles del jardín, pero Dios dijo que no comerás de la fruta del árbol que está en medio del jardín, ni siquiera lo tocarás a menos que muera. Pero el serpiente dijo a la mujer: no morirás. Porque Dios sabe que cuando lo comas, tus ojos se abrirán y serás como Dios, sabiendo bien y mal. Así que cuando la mujer vio que el árbol era bueno para la comida y que era un placer para los ojos y que el árbol era deseado para hacerlo sabio, tomó de su fruta y comió. Y también dio algo a su esposo y él comió. Entonces los ojos de ambos se abrieron y sabían que estaban desnudos. Y se lavaron hojas de figa juntas y se hicieron aprones. Y escucharon el sonido de Dios, el señor, caminando en el jardín en el calentamiento del día. Y el hombre y su esposa se escondieron de la presencia de Dios, el señor, entre los árboles del jardín. Pero Dios llamó al hombre y le dijo: ¿Dónde estás? Y dijo: escuché el sonido de ti en el jardín y estaba temprano porque estaba desnudo. Y se escondió. Él dijo: ¿Quién te dijo que estabas desnudo? ¿Has comido de la árbol que te pedí que no comieras? El hombre dijo: la mujer a la que te dijiste que ibas a estar conmigo, me dio fruta del árbol y comí. Entonces Dios dijo a la mujer: ¿Qué has hecho? La mujer dijo: el serpiente me engañó y comí. Dios dijo al serpiente: porque has hecho esto, te castigan, eres más que todo el cerdo y más que todo los animales salvajes. En tu vientre vas a ir y así comerás todos los días de tu vida. Voy a poner enmite entre ti y la mujer y entre tu semilla y su semilla. Él te hará daño a la cabeza y tú te harás daño a su pierna. A la mujer dijo: voy a multiplicar tu dolor en el soportar a los niños. En el dolor traerás hijos, sin embargo, tu deseo será para tu esposo y él dirá que dirige sobre ti. Y a Adam dijo: porque has escuchado la voz de tu esposa y has comido de la árbol a lo que te pedí, no lo comerás. Te castigan el suelo porque de ti. En toil lo comerás todos los días de tu vida. Torneles y cinturones te traerán. Y comerás las plantas del campo. En el sudor de tu cara comerás pan hasta que regreses al suelo, porque de ahí te sacaron. Tú eres polvo y a polvo volverás. El hombre llamó a su esposa Eva porque ella era la madre de todos los vivos. Y Dios hizo para Adam y para su esposa vestidos de piel y los vestió. Entonces Dios dijo: vea, el hombre se ha convertido como uno de nosotros, sabiendo bien y mal. Y ahora, a menos que le dé la mano y tome también del árbol de la vida y coma y viva para siempre. Por eso, Dios lo envió del jardín de Edén para limpiar el suelo de donde fue tomado. Llevó al hombre. Y al oeste del jardín de Edén colocó la silla de ellos y una espada quemadora que giraba en todos los sentidos para proteger el camino al árbol de la vida. Así que solo unos pocos comentarios sobre el árbol de la vida. La semana pasada hablamos del árbol de la vida y del árbol de conocimiento de bien y mal. Así que el árbol de la vida es simbólico para la elección para Dios, es un símbolo de Dios. Comer de ese árbol es compartir con Dios mismo, tener vida en él. Y así ese árbol representa la contemplación de Dios, lo viendo cara a cara. El árbol de conocimiento de bien y mal es... ¿Qué es? Así que... Es un símbolo de esa elección de rechazar a Dios. Es un símbolo de rebelión. Y también marca la frontera de la voluntad libre humana. Así que los seres humanos tienen una voluntad libre limitada. Dios tiene una voluntad libre sin límite. Dios es el que decide qué es bien y mal. Pero los seres humanos no pueden, simplemente pueden conocer la voluntad de Dios y tienen la libertad de elegirla o rechazarla. Y así ese árbol marca el límite de la libertad humana. Ahora, ¿ese árbol es un árbol bueno o un árbol malo? Y esta es la pregunta que muchos padres de la iglesia enfrentaron. Si el jardín de Edén es un lugar donde solo hay conocimiento de bien, entonces, ¿cómo podría Dios plantear algo malo o venenoso en el jardín de Edén? ¿Es simplemente puesto allí para probar, para proporcionar una prueba de la voluntad libre de Adam y Eva? No creo que lo sea, creo que hay más a él. Y así, como mencioné, ya sabes, algunos padres de la iglesia enfrentaron esta pregunta. Y San Gregory de Nansiasis y también varios otros padres llegaron a la conclusión, dicen: no. Es un árbol bueno. Pero Adam y Eva no estaban preparados espiritualmente, todavía no tienen madurez. No han crecido suficientemente en su espiritualidad para poder participar de ello y sobrevivir. Así que, ¿qué es? Una vez más, San Gregory propone que el árbol de conocimiento es la contemplación del mundo fuera de Edén en Dios. Así que la posibilidad de contemplar ese mundo fuera en Dios. Pero Adam y Eva todavía son inocentes, maduros. Y así proponen que después de un largo periodo de tiempo de preparación, cuando han alcanzado un alto nivel de madurez espiritual, cuando han crecido en la fe, desprendimiento de todo y confian en Dios, entonces ellos, con la permisió de Dios y por su gracia y en él, serían capaces de contemplar ese mundo fuera sin convertirse en parte de ello. Y así la amenaza ahora, Dios y su bondad dice: no lo comas porque morirás, no eres aún fuerte. Así que si comes de ese árbol y tratas de contemplar el mundo fuera, te convertirás en parte de ello. Bueno, eso funciona para mí, creo que es una explicación bastante buena. Así que de todos modos, sigamos con la historia. Genesis, tres, versículo uno. Ahora, el serpiente era más sutil que cualquier otra criatura salvaje que Dios había hecho. Dijo a la mujer: ¿Dijo Dios que no comerás de ningún árbol del jardín? Así que Satan, lo que significa engañador, tiene que venir en algún tipo de forma física. Es un espíritu invisible, así que tiene que manifestar su presencia, tiene que aparecer en algún tipo de forma. Ahora, no va a aparecer como un ángel o algún otro tipo de ser. No quiere alarmarlos, así que va a aparecer de tal manera, acercarse a ellos como un animal y posiblemente un amigo. Así que aparece a ellos, aparecerá a ellos en la forma, tomará la forma de un serpiente. Ahora, se dice en ese primer versículo que la criatura es salvaje. La criatura es salvaje. Así que, ¿qué significa eso? Bueno, significa que la criatura no pertenecía al jardín. Es una criatura que viene fuera, del mundo exterior. Y Dios le permitió entrar en el jardín por un breve periodo. Así que es una criatura del mundo exterior que entra en el jardín con la permisió de Dios. Se dice que la criatura era sutil, más sutil que cualquier otra criatura que Dios había hecho. Así que una vez más, eso indica o revela la habilidad del malvado, su inteligencia y su deseo de alguna manera engañar. Y el serpiente, por supuesto, es Satan mismo, el malvado, que ha venido a incitar a Adam y Eva a la rebelión, a unirse a él en su rebelión contra Dios. Ahora, nota cómo ha distorsionado la pregunta. Es casi como una mitad de verdad. Él dice: ¿Dijo Dios que no comerás de ningún árbol del jardín? Dios no dijo que no puedes comer de ningún árbol del jardín. Dios dijo que puedes comer de cada árbol excepto uno. Pero nota cómo lo ha distorsionado. Y la razón por la cual es porque está tratando, ¿cuál es el propósito? Su objetivo es atrapar a la mujer a la conversación, porque sabe que si una vez la atrapa a la conversación, no tiene chance. Y así Eva va a reaccionar al escuchar esto, esto, lo que no es verdad. Dios no dijo que no comerás de ningún árbol del jardín, va a corregir eso. Ahora, ¿por qué acerca a la mujer? ¿Dónde está el hombre en todo esto? Y hay todo tipo de especulaciones. Puede ser posible que acerque a la mujer porque espera que al engañarla, si ella va a ser la madre de todos los vivos, que engañará a toda la raza humana. Así que, ¿dónde está el hombre? ¿Está trabajando? ¿Viene el serpiente y se va de miedo y luego cumple su obligación como esposo? Todo esto es especulación, en mi opinión. Creo que está parado justo allí. Está observando todo esto, no se está atrapando en la conversación, ella está atrapada en la conversación. El serpiente ha logrado atraparla en la conversación, pero él está presente allí. Y notarás que el pecado ocurre en el corazón lentamente, hay la tentación. Y luego el pecado, la siguiente etapa es recibir esa tentación, pecar dentro del corazón, quererlo. Y luego la verdadera comida del fruto es solo la completa final de ese pecado. Así que creo que ambos, Adam y Eva, están parados allí. Ambos están siendo tentados al mismo tiempo. Y ambos, dentro de su corazón, hacen un acto de voluntad que desean participar de esa fruta. Así que empieza el pecado de la rebelión, empieza en el corazón. Y luego ambos libres comen de ello. Versos dos y tres. Y la mujer dijo al serpiente: podemos comer de la fruta del árbol del jardín. Pero Dios dijo que no comerás de la fruta del árbol que está en medio del jardín, ni siquiera lo tocarás a menos que muera. Nota que añadió algo aquí que Dios nunca dijo. Dios dijo que no lo comerías o seguramente morirías. Pero Eva ha añadido aquí, ni siquiera lo toques. Así que, ¿por qué añadió esto, que ni siquiera lo toques? Puede ser una indicación de que ya hay miedo dentro de su corazón. Así que Satan ha incitado el miedo ya dentro de su corazón. Así que el miedo de él y el miedo de incluso tocarlo. Y así es como funciona el diablo. Él quiere incitar el miedo, incita el miedo. Dios nunca incita el miedo, Dios trae paz. Todos los ángeles, cuando aparecen, dicen: no tengas miedo, porque Dios siempre viene en paz. El diablo incita confusión, semillas de duda, miedo. Y así vemos que realmente entrar en una conversación con el malvado nunca es una buena idea. Así que nunca debemos confrontar al malvado, porque como ser angélico es mucho más inteligente. because as an angelic being, he's much more intelligent than we are. And he is the master of deceit. And so our conversation in the midst of temptations should always be to the Lord God. So in the midst of temptation, especially ones that are incited by the evil one, we should be continually speaking to God, conversing in God in prayer, and asking Him to deal with the evil one. And God can do it. Once again, the tools that Satan is using here is doubt and fear. Genesis 3:4-5. "But the serpent said to the woman, 'You will not die; for God knows that when you eat of it your eyes will be opened, and you will be like God, knowing good and evil.'" So the evil one has already managed to sow a seed of doubt within the heart of Eve. Well, maybe God isn't as good as he, he claims to be. Maybe he's withholding something from us. So he doesn't want us to eat of this tree because when we do, we'll become wise. We'll know things and we'll become equal to Him, and he's afraid of the competition. So, so there's that seed of doubt that God is withholding something. He may not be as good as he originally seems to be. And so once he's, that doubt has taken root, now Satan comes through with the lie. "You will not die." So he's accusing that God is withholding something. "For God knows that when you eat of it your eyes will be opened; you will be like God, wise, knowing everything, good and evil, and you will be equal to Him." Now, it's kind of ironic because what the devil is offering here, they already have. They already have a knowledge of good. They have a knowledge of God. They experience good in the Garden of Eden. They have no need to experience evil, to experience sin. It's not beneficial for them at all. And God created them in His image and likeness. They were to continually grow in the likeness of God by grace. We call that deification, the process of becoming like God. They already have that. But the devil is offering them a false deification. Why wait? Eat of the tree and you will become like God immediately. Do it on your own. You don't need God's grace or help. Just do it. So what's happening in the heart of the woman? Well, we'll see that in verse 6. "So when the woman saw that the tree was good for food, and it was a delight to the eyes, and the tree was to be desired to make one wise, she took of its fruit and ate; and she also gave it to her husband, and he ate." So she has accepted the temptation. There's already been an ascent of the will. There's an ascent of the mind of the will to eating of the tree of disobeying God. And there's three distinct things that are happening within her soul, her mind. The first one, you see, she saw that the tree was good for food. In other words, it was good to satisfy her, to bring satisfaction, to satisfy her body. So the desire to satisfy herself. The second one, it says, "It was a delight to the eyes." All of a sudden, it was something she wanted to own, to have, to partake of. "I want this. It'll give me power and control." And then the third thing that happens within her heart, she sees the tree and desires it because it will make her wise. It'll make her equal with God. And we call that the sin of pride, to become like God by your own means. The sin of pride, to become equal with God. And so those are, those are going to be the consequences, the immediate consequences of the original sin. And Saint John Paul II, in the Theology of Body, he calls that the fruit of this, the fruit of that sin, the fruit of the tree of evil. It is that threefold sin. We will call it concupiscence. It's that inclination to evil that we will inherit. That inclination to evil, concupiscence, is threefold. The desire to satisfy the body, the self, the desire, the sin of the eyes, the desire of the eyes to have, own, control, and the pride of life, those three things. Now, this process is happening not just in her. It's happening in the man who's standing by. Otherwise, he wouldn't be responsible for his sin. So they are deceived in some way, but there is a decision, a voluntary decision to eat of the tree. And so, um, when she eats of it, it's just a fulfillment of what's already happened in her heart. And when she offers it to the man, there's no rebellion, there's no discussion, there is no, there's no opposition. He does the same because he's already sinned in his heart also by wanting to satisfy himself, the lust of the eyes and the pride of life. As they partake of the tree, their covenant relationship with God is broken. So covenant relationship is, um, is this relationship where one is total gift to the other. So in the covenant relationship, God is total gift to Adam and Eve here, and Adam and Eve are total gift to God. And in that first marriage, Adam and Eve are a gift to one another, total self-gift. Well, when they partake of that tree, both covenants, relationships, both covenant relationships are broken. Now, it's interesting, if you have the time, we don't have the time today, but if you go back to Luke or go forward, not back, go forward to Luke chapter 4, verses 1 to 14, you'll find there the account of, um, of the temptation of Jesus in the wilderness. So Jesus will go into the wilderness and fast there for 40 days, and the devil will come to, to tempt him. And he will tempt him in those very three same areas. Satisfy the body. Take this stone, turn it into bread. Satisfy your hunger. And Jesus, of course, will say, "Man does not live by bread alone, but by the word of God." And then he will tempt them in the area of the lust of the eyes. "Look, all the kingdoms of the world. I have dominion of the world. Why wait until your father gives you the kingdom? Bow down to me, and I'll give you all the kingdoms of the worlds to satisfy the lust of the eyes. Here, you can have it all, own it and control it." And of course, Christ wins over the temptation. He called curse. And then finally, the devil tempts him in that third area, the pride of life. "Jump off from the pinnacle of the temple, and don't worry, the angels will catch you. And all the people will see and say, 'Wow.'" Pride of life. And Christ, of course, on our behalf, conquers all three areas of temptation, conquers all areas where we are inclined towards sin, and conquers the sin of concupiscence on our behalf and for us. Verse 7. "Then the eyes of both were open, and they knew that they were naked; and they sewed fig leaves together and made themselves aprons." Usually, when people read this, they think that the first thing that they realize is that they're physically naked. Well, I don't think it's that simple. I think that the first thing that they realize is that they are spiritually naked. And so when God breathed the breath of life into them, when He created them, He breathed into them an immortal spirit soul into a body that God had formed, and they became a living being. But also, the Holy Spirit entered to dwell within them, to unite with the Spirit. So the Holy Spirit, God dwelled within them, and the presence of God sanctified them. So we can say that they were covered in this garment of light or sanctifying grace. And so when they disobeyed God, God left. The Holy Spirit left. And all of a sudden, they look at each other, and they no longer see that protective cloud of light around, that surrounded, that garment of light disappeared. And so when they realized that they were naked, they realized that they no longer are wearing the garment of light. Also, prior to the fall, when they looked at each other, they looked with very, with purity of heart. They saw a living icon of God. They saw someone to whom they could be a total gift to. But now the fall has changed their nature. And so now they're inclined towards sin. Now concupiscence rules. So now, when they look at one another, they're looking at the body, they're looking at that person. "Satisfy me." So the lust of the, of the flesh. And then the lust of the eyes. They look at each other with the lust of the eyes. "Oh, someone to have, to own, to control." And finally, the pride of life. "Someone over whom I can dominate, someone who I can compare to and be better to, someone who I can, um, not be equal in dignity, but surpass and exalt myself above the other." And so what's the reaction? Adam, Eve is looking at, at Adam and saying, "You're not looking at me the right way." And Adam is looking at Eve, and he says, "Well, Eve, you're not looking at me the right way. You're looking at me not as a somebody who is made in the image of God, someone who has dignity. That's the dignity. Our dignity lies in the fact that we're an image and likeness of God. You're not looking at me as a somebody. You're looking at me as a body." And so the reaction is to protect oneself, to protect one's dignity. And so what do they do? They cover the body in order to protect their dignity. So what leaves that they use? Some of the fathers of the church say that they use the trees of that tree of knowledge. Verse 8. "And they heard the sound of the Lord walking in the garden in the cool of the day; and the man and his wife hid themselves from the presence of the Lord among the trees of the garden." So according to tradition and also to some fathers, the fall occurred around noon. So, um, noon will be the time when Jesus will be upon the cross and darkness will cover the, the earth. Um, but God comes in the cool of the day. So it's near the end of the day already. After maybe 3:00 PM or 4:00 or later on, when the sun become, starts to set and it becomes much more cooler. So God comes, and it seems to be, seems to be in a, a, a kind of a daily routine. God is walking in the garden, and He wants to converse, enter into conversation with His children. But they hide themselves. And, um... God says to them, "Where are you?" So why do they hide themselves? Because they're afraid. So normally, they would come up to the Lord if there was a, a trust in His goodness and His mercy. There would have been a confession. "Lord, you told us not to eat of it, but we ate of it. We ask Your forgiveness." But instead, now the relationship has changed. It's not one of love, now it's of fear. And so they're afraid of punishment, so they hide. And there's shame and guilt. So again, the desire to hide the shame and the guilt. And so the Lord asks, "Where are you?" It's an interesting question. God knows everything. Of course, He knows where they are. But the question that He's asking is, "Where are you?" Spiritually, we were close, but now I feel the distance. We are now no longer close. You are alienated from me. And He's seeking from some kind of repentance. He's, he wants to see how are they going to respond? Now, of course, God will remain faithful to them. God never breaks His covenant relationship. He will always remain faithful to them. Verse 9 to 11. "But the Lord God called to the man and said to him, 'Where are you?' And he said, 'I heard the sound of you in the garden, and I was afraid because I was naked, and I hid myself.'" He said, "Who told you that you were naked? Have you eaten of the tree of which I commanded you not to eat?" Well, again, God knows exactly what happened. He's just simply waiting for a confession. So the question here is, does God appear to them in some form, or is, do they simply hear His voice? So we don't know. We don't know if God appeared in some form or simply they clearly heard His voice whenever they entered into conversation with Him. Now, which person, there's another question is, if you had to take a guess, which person of the Holy Trinity would be speaking to them? My guess, it would be the word of God, the second person, the Son of God, who in time will become the Savior. Verses 12 to 13. "The man said, 'The woman whom you gave to be with me, she gave me fruit of the tree, and I ate.'" Then the Lord God sent to the woman, "What is this that you have done?" The man said, "The serpent beguiled me, and I ate." So we see that God addresses the man first because he was created first. And then He addresses the woman who is created from out of the man. And so do you, do you see repentance here? Do you see a confession of sin? Do you see a request for forgiveness? No, there is a sense of, um, defense and blaming the other person. So Adam doesn't say, "Oh, I did wrong. I wasn't there to protect my wife. I succumbed to the temptation. I'm responsible for what I did. Forgive me, oh Lord." No, he defends himself, and he says, "Not my fault. It's that woman you gave me. It's her fault." So no repentance here. And then he turns to the woman, and the same thing happens. There is no accountability. She does not take any, make any accountability for what she has done. And she says, "No, it's not, it's not my fault. It's that serpent who came, who came into, into the garden. He beguiled me. He deceived me. It's his fault." Verses 14 to 15. So now the Lord God will deal with each one. He will begin with the serpent, and then He will address the man. I think, no, He'll begin with the serpent. He'll address the woman, and then He will address the man last. And it's not really a form of punishment. He's not pronouncing punishment here. He is simply telling them what is going to happen as a consequence. Okay? And so He's going to tell the man and the woman what's going to happen so that they're prepared. Again, you see that the motivation is love. But even when God punishes, He loves. His punishment is to correct. So when you look at the book of Revelation, it's, I think it's chapter 3, verse 20 or somewhere around there. Chapter 3, verse 20 or 19. Chapter three, verse 20, or 19. God's, it says in the scripture, "God punishment, punishes those whom He loves." So God appropriately corrects and reprimands those whom He loves because He wants them to come closer to Him in the end. That does not apply to the devil. It applies to the men and the women who have a chance for repentance. So He's going to deal with the serpent. So he speaks to Satan. He says, verse 14, "Because you have done this, cursed are you above all cattle and above all animals, and upon your belly you shall go, and dust you shall eat, and all the days of your life." That's a tough one to interpret. And the best I can do is simply to say this. So this fallen angel, Satan, was created good. He was created to be an angelic, bodiless spirit, filled with light and close to God in the invisible world. And he forsook all of that by his own choice, fully knowing what he was doing, chose to rebel against God and fell, lost the beauty that God had given him. Became ugly, rebellious. The choice was made once and for all. And now he has fallen into this universe, to the earth, and he's mixed with the material world. And so he can't break free from that material world. Now, he, he, he's condemned to to hell and condemned to, to being part of this material world, which he was not intended to be part of. So he becomes no better than, he is compared to cursed to the animals of the earth. So you're mixed in with this material, which you were never intended to be mixed with. "Because you have done this, cursed are you above all cattle and above all animals, and upon the belly you shall go, and dust you shall eat all the days of your life." Now, that last word can also indicate that he wants to deceive. He wants to lead men and women to death, which means return to dust. And so he seeks the death of men and women as part of his rebellion against God. Sorry, but that's the best I can do. If anybody else comes up with something, please let me know. Verse 15, and I love this verse. Every single Christian should know this verse and to be able to explain it because it is the announcement of the first gospel. Here, God promises to send a Savior. Our first parents just sinned, and God promises in His love to send a Savior. So listen carefully. "I will put enmity..." What's enmity? Enmity means war. "I will put enmity between you, Satan, and the woman." What woman? It's not Eve. It's a woman that'll appear in time. And that woman, that promised woman is the Blessed Virgin Mary. "Between your seed..." Some translations will use offspring. "Between your seed and her seed." So your seed, those who choose to follow you, to be deceived by you and join you in your rebellion. Those are your offspring. So war against you, your offspring, at enmity with the woman and her offspring, and her offspring is Jesus, the promised Savior. And all those who choose to follow God, those who choose to follow God's will, to live the way of life. And He, the promised Redeemer, the Savior, Jesus, He will bruise your head. In some translations, you will find the word "crush" to your head. He will crush your head. So He will, He will destroy your dominion over mankind and over the universe. He will crush your power. And you shall bruise His head. You shall bruise His heel. In other words, you shall attempt to somehow retaliate. And so you see in the arrest, the passion, the scourging, the crucifixion. The devil is trying to incite the people to inflict as much pain upon Jesus as possible. And he thinks that by causing his death, that he will win. And in the end, he realizes that the death of the Savior becomes the final victory punch. It's through the death of Jesus that His dominion is conquered, and so is death. So once again, Genesis three, verse 15, is called the Protoevangelium, the first gospel, the first announcement of a Savior. "And dear brothers and sisters, we are the offspring of the promised woman. Baptized into Christ, her son, we are offspring of the woman, the spiritual offspring of the woman." Verse 16. "Now God turns to the woman, and He says to her, 'I will greatly multiply your pain in childbearing. In pain you shall bring forth children; yet your desire shall be for your husband, and he shall rule over you.'" So once again, God is addressing the woman and He tells her, as a loving Father, He's telling her what's going to happen to her. So the greatest gift given to a woman is, is to be able to bear life, to conceive and to carry a child and bring forth new life into the world. It is, would be the great source of joy to cooperate with God in, in creating new life. It's, it's an awesome vocation, okay? And so this great joy, this great source of joy, now will be mixed with both joy and pain, grief and sadness. So you have, there's a knowledge now of good and evil in something that was meant to be completely good. And so childbirth, childbearing and child giving birth will be, will be done so forth in pain, the experience of pain, so knowledge of good and evil. And then, of course, the great joy when the child is born. Now, marriage, which was supposed to be harmonious, and now is going to be affected by concupiscence, and there's this daily battle to live a life of love, to live out marriage as an image and likeness of God. So again, those three things, the lust of the body, the lust of the eyes, the pride of life are going to affect the marriage relationship. She's going to want her husband. The lust of the body, she will want the lust of the eyes. She will want to have control, to own, to control the other, and finally, the pride to exalt one above the other. And the same thing, the husband will, will, will be tempted in the same way. And so the battle for marriage and the battle for true love will be a battle against concupiscence. Verse 17. "And to the man he said, 'Because you have listened to the voice of your wife and have eaten of the tree of which I commanded you, you shall not eat of it. Cursed is the ground because of you; in toil you shall eat of it all the days of your life, thorns and thistles that shall bring forth for you, to you; and you shall eat the plants of the field. In the sweat of your face you shall eat bread till you return to the ground; for out of it you were taken, you are dust, and to dust you shall return.'" So the greatest kind of source of joy and fulfillment for the man is to work. It's the same to this day. A man gets his self-work, self-worth from, from what he does. His work gives meaning for his life. Well, that work to till and keep the garden was supposed to be a source of fulfillment, of joy. And all of a sudden, now it's not going to be so easy. It's, it's going to be mixed with joy, with toil, suffering, pain. So by the sweat of the brow, you will, you will eat your bread. You will, you'll be faced with failure, setbacks. And yet you will have to continue. You have to move forward. So if anybody, whenever somebody says, "I love my job," I don't totally believe them because none of us totally love our job. Everything that we do in life is always mixed with joy and with pain and sorrow. We all face setbacks and failure and have to deal with it because it's part of the fall. It's part of the, it's the consequence of the fall and us living in this world, this visible world. Again, a second paradise, still good, but where there's a knowledge of good and evil. And so then finally, the Lord tells him that eventually what's going to happen is that death is that final consequence of sin. So eventually, you will grow old and the body will separate from the soul. And so the body will die and return to the earth. And of course, we know the soul then would, is deprived of a vision of God, a living face to face with God. So the soul, which is immortal, will be then destined to the land of the dead, Hades, which is also under the dominion of Satan. So spiritual death, that's the first death. Spiritual death is the separation of the soul from God. And the second death is a physical death, the separation of the body from the soul. Genesis three, verses 20, 21. "The man called his wife's name Eve." It's interesting, he gives the name. So again, it's a sign of dominion, of taking that first step to have control. "Because she was the mother of all the living, and the Lord God made for Adam and for his wife garments of skin and clothed them." Garments of skin. Where did, where did God get garments of skin? You have to sacrifice an animal. Skins come from a dead animal. So God had to sacrifice an innocent animal in order to clothe Adam and Eve in garments of skin. So what animal did he use? Some have proposed that God used an innocent lamb. And you see where I'm going with this? That already points to the coming Savior. That God will eventually, now he is sacrificing an innocent lamb in order to clothe them in garments of skin, which are signs of protection, that He will send them into this world, but He will be with them. He will still protect them. But the sacrifice of the lamb also points to the coming Savior Redeemer, who will be the Lamb of God, who will be sacrificed, an innocent lamb who will be sacrificed in order to remove that garment and to restore the garment of the light. Now, the garment of skin is also a symbol of death, the mystery of death. And so it's a sign that God will protect. He will protect us in this world, the human race. He will protect the men and the women in this world in which He's going to send them into. But eventually, they will die. And the garments of skin point to the final consequence of sin, which is death. So in conclusion, again, all is not lost. So as a consequence of the original fall, what happens is that the human heart is blinded. So it cannot see as clearly as before, but it can still see. It, it now more susceptible to ignorance. The human being has more difficult, a difficult time knowing what's true, what's good clearly. Conversation of God is possible, but it's not as easy as it was before. Now there's this inclination towards evil, which has become part of human nature. Again, the lust of the flesh, the lust of the eyes and the pride of life. And so that image and likeness has been tarnished. But it's only been tarnished, it's not lost. Human nature is still good. It is corrupted, but it is still good. And God will return to remove the corruption and to restore that image and likeness in us to what He originally intended it to be. And so our life will be a battle for life. As a Christian, our life daily is a, is a battle for love and a battle against concupiscence. So it requires what? That we deny ourselves, and that way we fight the lust of the flesh to satisfy? That we take up the cross, which is a means of then fighting the lust of the eyes to have, to own, to control? So to take up the cross as a means of fighting that? And then finally, to, to, to battle against the pride of life by following Jesus and His Word, putting His words into life. So the call of the Christian, the vocation is, "Jesus, you want to become one of my disciples? Deny yourself, take up the cross and follow Me." That right there is the remedy against concupiscence, the lust of the eyes, the lust of the flesh and the pride of life. Verses 22, 23. "Then the Lord God said, 'Behold, the man has become like one of us, knowing good and evil; and now lest he put forth his hand and take also of the tree of life and eat and live forever, therefore the Lord God sent him forth from the garden of Eden to till the ground from which he was taken.'" So Adam and Eve must leave the garden. It was their choice. So they lived in a place where there's just knowledge of good. Eating of the tree of knowledge of good and evil was a choice to live in the world where there is a knowledge of good and evil, and that's the world outside. That's that outer world, earth and the universe that exists outside. And so they must leave the garden and go into that world that they have chosen. Now, God also doesn't want them to have access to the garden of Eden because He doesn't want them to have access to the tree of life. Why? Because they're not ready to eat of it. Now they're not ready to eat of that tree. So you know, according to Saint Irenaeus, one of the fathers of the church, is that, that God did not want them in that fallen state to eat of the tree of life and then to remain in that fallen state forever. So now they're not ready to eat of the tree of life and they have to wait. So the promised Savior must come. The garments of skin must be removed. And then one day, God will give them access to the tree of life. Verse 24. "He drove out the man at the east of the garden of Eden; he placed a cherubim and a flaming sword, which turned in everywhere way to guard the way to the tree of life." So the question that I pose, we're coming close to an end already here, but the question I propose to you now is, do we have access today to the tree of life? Do the cherubim still guard the entrance? Okay, so do the cherubim still guard the entrance? The answer is no. They left. Do we have access to the tree of life? The answer is yes. What about the garments of skin? Have they been removed? Yes, for most of us. And the last question, what is the tree of life? What is the tree of life? Well, the tree of life is Jesus Himself risen from the dead. is Jesus himself, risen from the dead. Some have said that the tree of life is the cross because the cross gives life, the life-giving cross. But you really can't separate the cross from the resurrection. The tree of life is both the cross and the resurrection together. And the fruit of the tree, you have to eat of it. What is the fruit of the tree? The fruit of the tree is Jesus risen from the dead in the mystery of the Most Holy Eucharist. When we approach for holy communion, we partake of the tree of life, the fruit of that tree, which is Jesus risen from the dead, his body, blood, soul and divinity, for what? For the forgiveness of sins and life everlasting. Amen. So whenever we come to the divine liturgy, where the altar is, the doors are open because it's a sign that the door, the gates to paradise have been opened, we have access to the tree of life. And the tree of life becomes present upon the altar. The moment of his death on the cross and his resurrection, both saving moments, all the saving moments, important saving moments of, of, of our salvation become present before us, the incarnation, the arrest, the mystical supper, the, the cross, the burial, the resurrection, the sitting at the, the ascension, the sitting at the right hand and the second coming, all of that becomes present. And we partake of the tree of life. And in receiving holy communion, we already partake of life, of his divine life, life with him. And it's just a matter of time before we shall see him face to face. So I'm going to back up just a few steps. In baptism, the candidate removes his all outer clothing as a sign that the old person is being removed. The, the old garments of skin will be removed in baptism. The person enters into the water, the font naked, is immersed into water as a sign of being immersed into God. Immersed into God the Father in order to be reborn as a child of God. Immersed into God the Son, Jesus immersed into his death upon the cross, his burial in order to rise with him. And immersed into God the Holy Spirit as if a divine font in order to be cleansed, sanctified, already made holy in the eyes of God, even though we haven't reached perfection of holiness as yet. And to be restored with that grace, so the Holy Spirit, we receive the gift of the Holy Spirit that comes to indwell with, in our heart, and that indwelling presence of the Holy Spirit restores the garment of light. And the person then is clothed in white because white is the, the closest color that we have to light as a sign that the whole person is enveloped by the sanctifying grace of God. In that state, we have access to the tree of life. Baptism, chrismation confirms that we have been sealed with the gift of the Holy Spirit, that the spirit dwells within us. And in that state, we now have access to return to, to, return to paradise, to the tree of life and to partake of it. I'd like to share with you the staghito at Christmas. So at Christmas, we actually sing this, I think most people don't pay attention to this, but you've got to come to complance, okay? So next year, you got to come to Great Complance because that's where you're going to hear this. So you come late for liturgy, you won't hear this. So this is what you'll hear at Christmas at Great Complance. "Come, let us rejoice in the Lord as we tell this present mystery. The middle wall of partition has been destroyed. The flaming sword turns back. The cherubim withdraws from the tree of life. And I partake of the delight of paradise from which I was cast out through disobedience." So there's lots there. You could, you could spend the rest of your life just meditating on this chapter because there's, there's a lot there. So in conclusion, I just want to review the consequences of original sin. First, their eyes were both opened, so there's an awareness of concupiscence operating within them. So there's an awareness of that inclination towards sin operating within them. And the covenant between God is broken. And in some ways, the covenant between one another in marriage is damaged. The second consequence, they knew that they were naked. So there's an, an awareness of, there's a spiritual nakedness, they have lost the sanctifying grace, they've lost that original innocence and righteousness, holiness, they have lost the garment of light. Third consequence, they sewed fig leaves together and made themselves aprons. And so there's, there's a, now a new sense of guilt and shame. And there's a need now to protect their dignity as human beings because very often we are looked upon as objects by other people, not as icons, living icons, but very often people look at other people as objects, which come, becomes the whole basis for pornography. What's that all about? That's all about concupiscence and looking at the human being as an object. Fourth consequence, "And the man and his wife hid themselves from the presence of the Lord." So they were alienated from God. They lost their life of closeness with God. And as a consequence, heaven, paradise will be closed. The fifth consequence, "I will greatly multiply your pain in childbearing, yet your desire shall be for your husband." So there'll be a struggle to bring life into the world and a struggle within, within marriage itself. The next consequence, "Cursed is the ground, and sweat you shall eat bread." So the vocation to be a steward of God's creation will be a struggle. Relationship with creation will be tainted. Again, the temptation to use and abuse. And finally, the struggle with failure and setbacks. And the last consequence, of course, is death itself. "You are dust, and to dust you shall return." That concludes our Bible study for this evening. And homework for next week is to read Genesis, chapter four to 11. Genesis, chapter four to 11, where we will continue with a description of the descendants of, of Adam, the story of Cain and Abel, the story of Noah and the flood, and the story of the Tower of Babel and the creation of nations. And that'll conclude the first period in the Bible, which is called the early world or primeval history. That is the first period of time in our timeline, in our history of salvation. Let's conclude with a prayer. "Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen." In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Glory be to Jesus Christ. Slava Isosokristo.